Okay, it's nine oh two. We're gonna call this meeting out of recess. Board supervisor, please stand. Can you give us an indication to press? Yes, sir.
Just by means of access. Just help me follow and thank you, God, this morning for allowing us to see another day. Father, we just ask you, God, that you continue to use our elected officials, Father, to continue to keep a head of protection over them, and, Father, continue to give them wisdom from on high. Father, we continue to pray for this county. We pray for the city. We pray for the state, and we pray for this country. Continue to uplift all the elected officials. And, Father, we just continue to pray for Adams County, allowing visitors to come in, God. Father, we just continue to pray for our first responders, pray for our kids that are going back to school. Father, we just ask you, God, to continue to show favor in Adams County, God. And, Father, we just thank you, give your name all unpraised, glory in the name of the Father, the Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Turn to the pledge. My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everybody. All right, I guess we better have a roll call. Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Miss Hutchins.
Here.
Mr. Gaines. Mr. Gaines is not here presently. Mr. Middleton.
Present.
Ms. Dean.
She's here.
Okay. Ms. Lewis.
Present.
Mr. Slover.
Yes.
And Ms. Con.
Here.
And I'm here. All right. I need a motion to approve the docket. Moved by Mr. Middleton. Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries. Special presentations, if any? Mr. Brown, Judge.
Yes, sir.
Would you like to come on? We'll take care of your matter.
Should I go?
Yeah, I'd be fine.
Put him there.
I don't like ordering you around. I can do whatever you want.
I'm here today on behalf of my boss, Mary Kay Dory. Who runs this, who runs the youth court very well. First of all, I want to thank the board for considering our request a few months ago for allocation of some of the opioid settlement funds. That is gonna be a huge boost for us. I wanted, if you're not familiar with that, or if the club is not familiar with it, the government settled a large case with opioid producers, drug manufacturers, pharmaceutical companies, and billions of dollars was placed into a fund, and they've been allocated to cities and counties, and I'm not sure how they came up with the allocations and all. And I'm glad to see that it came, and you guys, I felt like, made a good decision in allocating some of those funds to our drug courts and the adult drug court, because that's, that was the basis of the settlement in the first place, was because of the damage that has been done for people's lives and families for many years now with drug addiction, which we deal with every day over in youth court and our family drug court. So, thank y'all very much for that. It's gonna be very helpful. We're gonna use it for treatment, primarily. Treatment meaning, right now, the state of Mississippi, we can get someone committed, sent to the state hospital, and they keep them about thirty days. It's about the most they'll keep them. Really, it turns into more of a detox situation. We've had some luck with that, but quite frankly, most of the times, these folks relapse and will start back over again. We have a mother right now, she went to that treatment three times, and didn't work. She's got an eight-year-old and a nine-year-old, and we want to desperately reunify her with them. We spent about thirty-five hundred dollars out of our trucks on the bluff, money we made for our little event back in April, and sent her to a faith-based facility down in South Mississippi, where she's been for about four months, and she's gonna be there another three months, and she's doing great. And we're hoping that we can put off her termination of parental rights case and reunify her with her children and close that case out. And that's what we want to use these funds for. So, just wanna let y'all know that that's been very helpful, and I promise you, we'll use it for those purposes only. Secondly, Mary Kay asked me to come today. The city also made an allocation to us out of some of the funds they got. And Valencia Hall is pretty active with our youth court, family, youth court, children's family coalition. We were talking one day about the problems we see with transportation. If we take that for granted, you wouldn't be surprised by how many people don't have transportation or don't have reliable transportation to get to court. And so, we said, other drug courts have vehicles, you know, I think the adult drug court's got a couple of vehicles now, that they got through their grant. Not asking for a car, but Valencia said, hey, you know what? The city's got a couple cars just sitting back there on the lot, and I know they run, but y'all want one of those. We'll sell it to you for a dollar. So, as of last week, we're the proud owners of, I don't even know what year model it is. I all know it's just black, and it's a Crown vehicle, and it runs. And our FAST team, which is, I can't remember what it stands for, but it's a public health grant, they're going to put a rap on it to show that it's, you know, property of the court courts here, Adams County Youth Court, with a QR code that you can, anybody can click on when they see it, and they can order meloxone or any other, get information about drug addiction if they're going through that. It's gonna be an overdose awareness card, so to speak. But we're also gonna use it to transport people to treatment, transport people to court, go to the schools and collect urine samples from kids who can't get there. What we're asking from the board supervisor, we said, we'd like to put that car on the county's insurance and get a gas card that we will pay for. The gas card, we'll pay for that out of the opioid funds that we have. I don't envision us using it every day by any means.
Is the car old enough which just needs liability insurance?
Yes, I'd say.
No sense in getting.
I haven't got, yeah, I think it's a long car. The driver's.
Underestimating liability. Mr. Slover, what do you think?
Ask your insurance, see what coverage you need to have. We are a little.
Okay. You just need to get the information on the car.
We'll have the drivers, they'll be our two drug court coordinators, TFLs, and Pallas Hunt, and then we have a peer support specialist onboard now that's been real helpful with our drug courts, named Bryant Kitter. They'll be our main drivers. Like I said, I don't envision taking it very far, and occasionally we may have to transport an adult to a treatment facility like we have to do previously. They don't have transportation.
Do we need a motion for that, Judge?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I get a motion to put insurance on the drug? Second. Motion by Ms. Slover, and second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Question. You mentioned liability. Do liability cover if we transporting someone in the car and they get hurt or something like that?
Yeah, even once your insurance coverage to be anyone that's could be hurt by the driver or by the negligence of the.
I thought liability was if you hit somebody else.
Yeah, but it's also somebody's in the car with you.
So, that cover that?
It's any type of negligence.
Okay.
And again, you're at, you're gonna tell Johnny to put us on, it's probably gonna be the same coverage as the rest of our vehicles, I think he can, you know, pick his, yeah, he can choose.
All in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
On the issue of the gas card, I'm not sure what that.
I'll do that, too.
Okay. Yeah, the overdose awareness event, we, August 31st, I believe, down there in bluff. August 30th, excuse me. August 30th, R O B there, if anybody wants to check out, once we look at the, the rap on it. We think it's gonna be a big asset, so like I said, transportation is, you know, we reported the other day, one of the lawyers said, why don't you just get a car? You know, I thought, it's harder than it looks, you know, it's a struggle, but I think that's gonna be a big help just to get them to court possibly, and get them to treatment. Right now, we can get the sheriff's department to take charge, but we can't take out. So, I appreciate everything y'all do.
Okay. You're welcome, and thank you for what y'all do up there, 'cause that is a big task. And when you have a success, it's exciting when you do your wonders.
We've had some successes. I wish we had more.
Yeah.
They're coming around.
All right, thank you.
They've been huge.
All right.
Y'all have a good meeting.
All right.
That's it.
Okay, Patricia Devine Mohammed, you got three minutes, ma'am. We're counting on you today. You've got a place to go.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I was here two weeks ago with Supervisor Gaines, talking about the Sister City International Program, and I was asked to submit a copy to the attorney. And so, Mr. Gaines did get that, so we just wanted to make sure this morning that the attorney had the information and the copy. This is just the proposal, and I have extra copies for anyone else, since Mr. Gaines isn't here this morning with his copies.
Yes, ma'am. I've gotten it, and I've had a chance to review it, but I'll need to review it, and I'll send it to the board, and if you get a chance to talk with Warren, when I can get a chance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, city government business, if any? Any city government business, Scott would like to think.
Mr. President. Scott wasn't there, but we did meet with the mayor and all of Dean Davis, Supervisor Gaines, me, and Bobby, and we had some discussion on Muggert Town Road, so I guess Jerry Johnson gonna be sending something to us, whatever they come up with. I just wanna let you know, be prepared to get something that we can look over from the city that's dealing with Muggert Town Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, departmental reports. Any one go first?
Good morning. And then, P911, this will be your district hall from the beginning of this month until now. National Fire Department, 23, National PD, 533, S O, 365. Also, I have two boards in front of you, they're in front of you for pay rate change for two employees that certified.
What are those names? Elena Clark.
Yes.
And Chastie Brown.
Yes.
From fourteen dollars to fifteen eighty-three an hour on both of them, thirty-two thousand, nine twenty-six forty. I need a motion.
Some of.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins. Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? This is within your budget?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
Yes, I'll.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Joe Bellin, the intervention court. Last, or two weeks ago, I presented information from MSPHI, the amount of money that was spent versus amount of money that was recovered, and since the last meeting, the seventy-one eighty-one forty that was showing outstanding for the June reimbursement has been collected. So, I just wanna let y'all know that. I also sent a contract to Attorney Slover last week for, to be spread across the minutes for a drug tester for us. I do have the original here, if you'd rather sign the original.
Okay, we already made a motion on this.
No, I've written down it.
Yes.
And it's with reference, and also is subject to our funding sources that have been made available.
Right, and it's true, and MSPHI is reimbursing for this.
And it says in the contract, so it's.
All right, I need a motion for me to be able to sign this memorandum of understanding.
Some of.
Moved by Mr. Middleton.
Same.
Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor?
A.
Any names? Motion carries.
I have the original, if you'd rather sign the original versus the email copy.
It's up to.
It makes no difference.
Attorney over there. Both of them have the original section, so.
Okay. The only other thing I wanted to mention was what Judge, I have to touch on with what Judge Breton spoke about just a few minutes ago. The overdose awareness day is gonna be August the 30th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00. It is gonna be on the bluff, and asking for the board if they'd like to come, and if anybody would like to speak, I would need to know so that we can schedule it. We're only asking for about five to seven minutes at most.
We've got two more meetings before then, so we'll be reminded, I'm sure.
Okay.
Several times.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Good morning.
Yes, ma'am.
I am Corbin McNeil, the immortals clerk. I was coming to ask permission for myself and the Dean Price Purchase Clerk to travel to Beluxi for our conference, October the 25th through, I think it's the 29th, I don't have to give you that, for our annual Mystic Association of Purchasing Property Conference.
All right, you heard the request. Have I got paperwork on that?
I have it. I haven't done the travel yet.
Oh, okay.
I was just asking for permission if I can.
What about the receiver, please?
Um, I can check with her to see if she wants to come.
Let's just add them.
Yeah, and receive her, one of the questions.
She's a part of that.
Yeah.
All right. Motion by Ms. Hutchins. Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor?
No.
Any names? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is Nick.
The Dean Price Purchase Clerk for Adams County. First, I would like to ask for approval to advertise for six-month and one-year, well, department's funds.
All right. Moved by Mr. Middleton.
Same.
Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries.
Okay, I would like to ask for approval to advertise for pest control, two-year contract in September 30, 2025. Also, I would like to ask if anyone has an updated list of the county's buildings and addresses, because when I did it two years ago, two other buildings were added on, so I didn't know who would be able to provide it. Yeah, I'm a third party.
Corvett.
Corvett. I bet you have that, okay. So, I'd like to approve.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Motion for pest control. Moved by Mr. Middleton.
Same.
Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Any names? Motion carries.
Okay, the third one, I would like to ask permission for the advertise for the disaster debris monitoring ending September 30th, 12, one year, just to bring up the debris removal and the monitoring that's together, because we had to go back and do another bid with the removal, because no one bid it on it last time. So, removal ends February 1st, 2026.
All right, any motion to brief?
Monitoring.
Just monitoring, I'm sorry. All right. Moved by Mr. Middleton.
Same.
Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor?
No.
Any names? Motion carries.
Brad, did you hear something that way? I was just. You know, right now, that's an uncertainty with FEMA. All that, it's a stock question, if we wanna advertise, we don't know what FEMA is gonna do. And, you know, like I said, I just recommend see what they gonna do first before we start going contracts, with debris monitoring and with debris removal first. See what the future gonna be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Until they tell us different, we're just gonna go on like we've been doing, so.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause with these contracts, we don't ever have to use them unless we choose to use them. But if we do use them, and we have advertised under the current procurement regulations, we can get reimbursed for.
But the only thing is just time-consuming, trying to let you put bids in and do all that, so that's, yeah, I just don't like where people find them, you know, until we really know.
All right. Do you have something else?
Yeah, so we are gonna advertise.
When it comes up? Yeah, if we're not totally different, then.
Now.
Did you talk about the?
Monitoring. Talking about the right now, we're gonna continue.
Yeah, we're.
Monitoring is doing.
If we're out of contract, we need to have one here.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. This is Nick.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
I'm reminded of back to service officer for the county. Just got back from the national conference, learned a lot, made a lot of contacts, starting to work on some stuff to help me to help the veterans a lot more. So, that's all I have for right now. Let y'all have any questions for me.
Okay, appreciate it. I know they do.
We got a lot of banners coming at office.
Yes.
You do have.
Yes.
All right, it's good. Thank you.
Good morning, board. Brad, Brad for Adams County, EMA Director for Fire Department. I got a couple of things. President Wilson should have our EMA County Mercy Magic Plan Signature Page, we need to go and get that thing signed and adopted to be sent to me.
What is it?
Our County Mercy Magic Plan, we have to do it every.
Anything changed?
No, it didn't have changed. We just got the.
Is it a huge?
Ah, it just one page, signature page.
Okay.
Yeah, we've already voted to adopt it, we just gotta get the signature page, signature.
Same as previous year?
I'm sure you brought it, brought it.
So, she put it in stamps.
Okay.
Should be just one page.
All right, I got it. All right, I need a motion.
Some of.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins. I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
No.
No. Any names? Motion carries.
Hutchins and Watson.
Also, I think the neck was working, and the board approved us to start looking at a tanker for our volunteer fire tank. And that did have a resolution that the board need to sign, pray that she get that to you.
Don't say it in here, let's see, unless.
Was that Brad?
A resolution for to get, for the Rule 5 program.
Yes, yeah, that's right here, I just put these.
We just gotta get that.
Yes.
Spread across the net.
Okay.
I almost had us, somebody beat us to it.
Yeah.
Lady in Virginia.
I think that's it.
That's what he said.
Get the truck away to somebody.
Then what is it?
That's what he said, that one that.
Told him, put us on your list.
Our truck.
Be new trucks, man.
All right, so we need a motion to apply for the Rule 5 fire truck grant.
Some of.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins.
Sorry.
Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor?
No.
Any names? Motion carries.
Okay, we did talk about with that second part of that, of course, the rear ground five, that mean we do qualify up to fifty thousand dollars in assistance to pay for the fire truck. And we did set out for some specs on one of our volunteer fire trucks, and we do have a fire truck company, they're already on state contract, so we only have to get, you know, one, the one that fit our volunteers. And it's a Rosenberg, it's a two-hundred, two-thousand gallon tanker that we're gonna use for the county, we like to use for the county, be spacing down in Lake Monmouth. So, this, one of our first steps is trying to get a lot more watercake buildings in the county, one north and one south, and this was A, and I am up agreeing with the fire department, getting water on the seams to certain houses. And it's in stock, and their delivery time is a hundred twenty, twenty days. Their price is three thousand, three hundred ninety-seven thousand and twenty-six dollars on that, and that's a eighty-twenty grant, so the county will only have to pay roughly seventy-nine thousand, plus with the Rule 5 grant, fifty thousand we can borrow, pay back with their five to ten years of that. So, we looking at probably twenty thousand dollars that's coming from, well, it's gonna be the sending out, we have to pay back, but the state has funds that we can use early if we don't have it to pay for upfront on that, if we wanna go there.
Okay.
I got the paperwork right here.
Yeah, that's be something that Mr. Slover and Ms. Connor have to work out with the budget season coming up.
That's all I have pending, the board.
Okay. All right, Mr. Brad, well, thank you. This is Nick.
Good morning, board. First thing I have, on the levy job, I know Mr. Slover knows about it, but Doug Wimbley had contacted me two weeks ago about the levy job, this county could do some gravel on the levy, to cut expenses for the levy cost. Like I told Mr. Wimbley, I had to rank for the board, talked to the board. I know we had Chandler here before, and Mr. Wimbley here before, both, talking about the levy, the city would run over, the price would be, you know, what it was, but now it's, there won't, I think, eight inches of gravel, I forget how many tons of gravel they could, about twenty, twenty-five thousand, am I correct, Scott? Price-wise, I think that's forty tons, about twenty, twenty-five thousand, but I just wanna rank for the board, 'cause like I told him, I have to come before the board, I can't do anything like that.
Yeah, maybe about eighty thousand he said would save.
Yeah, something, but, that's a lot of gravel we have purchased to do, but I'm hoping Scott maybe could tell a little more about why he would want to count, he would, I know to save on the job, but I would, is it a run over, or is it, I mean, never going a lot of details.
Mr. President.
He's never said that.
Yes.
I don't know, but we certainly are, you and I are worried about it.
I heard what Robert said, he mentioned it to me before, but I just feel if somebody wants something that this board need to approve, they need to come before this board and explain everything that they need to explain, and I don't think it should be Robin and Scott explaining nothing for them. They need to come before this board themselves. That's just my opinion.
And I guess we need to get some clarification on why and what, you know, they're asking.
Unless you got all that money in your budget, you can just go.
No, I'll fix, I'll ask for something else in my budget right now, to get that. I need something else, I'll need to put a gravel on the levy.
Do you think we could do, take that up on the fourth?
Mr. Coughlin?
Yes.
The last one, son.
Next meeting?
I could ask him to show up on the fourth.
Yeah, we actually next meeting, I don't.
You think we?
Want to explain, but he, you know, he just sent me the drawings and how much gravel and, you know, never really a reason why I pay them, and if, you know, I guess, my thinking maybe the cost would run over, I don't know, I mean, that's what.
He's not full of that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I can't say nervous enough, that's right, so. But anyhow, well, I guess, yeah, if you get him lined up for the next meeting, I just want him right after the fourth of August.
Okay.
We have some fire hydrants within the county, we have one in seventy-nine steam plant that got hit by a vehicle, they do not have insurance, I do have it on the list, I got three others that I just ordered a large for, and I'm gonna order these. But Gaylor Liberty Road in North Calisade will be three new hydrants put in, we discussed this before, Gaylor Liberty, by the pipe, not, the water line is not digging up, but I had met with Ken Arian and talked to Herman there, and they gonna work with us to get these installed, so it will be fully within the county, be seventy-nine steam plant, Gaylor Liberty and North Calisade, I just didn't know that. Seal Road, last meeting, we're talking about trash, and the figures of those. Um, Seal Road, last meeting, um, we talked about trash and the figures of those trash out on Seal Road. Uh, we went out, cleaned it up, had a deputy come out, a deputy went through the trash, found some names, and was going to meet with the owner. Had everything back yet, you know, uh, report on it, but he did find some information in it, that he was wanting to talk to them. Yes, person that own the trash, I don't know if they put it out, but their name was in the trash, so I just give it up, take. And we cleaned it up, and I was right, this morning totally thinking, I said, yeah, I had it on my list to talk about, but it was a name, so they wanted to talk to them. Um, President Wilson, you have a request for pay on a tire grant for six hundred and forty dollars?
Yes. And, okay, it's just a duplicate?
Yes, sir.
Okay, need a motion for tire grant?
Some.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Milton, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, what, what I'll do this for?
The six forty, just picking up tires like side of the road, or we bring them to our place, and they gonna pick them up, we get reimbursed, they, they reimburse this.
My question is, uh, Southview, where you got some tires down on state property, would, would it cover that?
It should, yes, sir.
Well, that was part of my report, I went down there yesterday, man, I got a picture of them, need to go down and check it out, they, them tires need to be removed.
You know, from tires to bumpers to this to that, you know, that guy's in modern, I ain't gonna say he legal stuff, but you know, he, that's the same one that had the bumper, didn't it? So that's the tires, that's him. So I, I, you know, think we need to give him a visit, because we have to keep going back, like you said.
Well, I think you need to send the chief on and.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So, we go down and remove them, we really have to have a chair and fall, but I guess I'm gonna have something on that call with you.
What you need?
A motion to give us.
I, I knew that we go down there.
Plus, uh, we got a continuous motion. Um, all in favor?
None.
Any names, motion carries? Okay, what you didn't want to motion for?
We go down the end of, uh, South, what is it, Southview?
Southview.
Southview Drive, uh, they got some tires down there on state owned property that need to be removed.
Motion by Mr. Gray?
Same.
Second by Ms. Hutchins, any more discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names, motion carries?
And Mr. Wilson, I brought up you by the tree, when we went through the playground set at Kingston School last week, we broke it out last Thursday, we got towed. We went out, broke it out, took some pictures of it.
Okay, uh, I don't know if they need to be turned in the insurance, I don't know if they covered, uh, things that are, it's not, I don't know what you really call it, it's just recreational equipment, uh, but it might be part of the insurance policy, but, um. It's pretty expensive to replace. Okay.
Last thing I have, Mr. Gray, talking about money in my budget, I do have some money that with my budget, and I'd like for the board to, uh, give me permission to advertise where Skid Steer, where the most they had to grapple on the front, uh, I think it would help the county a lot to have one. Uh, within the county, a lot of stuff we do, outside roads, picking up, I do have money in my budget to cover, or give me permission.
Certainly.
And I'll give a few, I mean, you know, I just want permission first and then after that.
Okay, motion in bio.
Where I get you, make it.
Bio.
I'm looking, make sure it's there, pending.
Pending financial review.
Correct.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gray, discussion?
Me, uh, what, what kind of money we telling them?
Hundred forty-five thousand, hundred fifty thousand.
What is it?
Skid steer, want to get a skid steer, never had one like that, in the S L, never had one, got one, we get it all the time, the skid steer be well geared.
Yeah, they're, they're one of those.
Yes.
So is this something we gonna lease out, or we gonna?
Uh, like purchase, if I, but I can, I mean, it's, it's something that's.
It's new.
Well, if, if, if you're gonna be, like, you know who's gonna be running it all the time, because no one, common equipment like that, everybody just jumps in and says they know how to run it, they tear it all pieces.
I think it was kind of lease purchase.
Well, I can, but I mean, I do have the money in the budget.
Oh, you do have the money, you need to purchase it, okay.
Correct.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
None.
Uh, any names, motion carries?
And that's all I have, uh, we give up there on some E W Ps, uh, that we turned in, and the system went down when he was out looking at them. Uh, and I don't have all the names, just, just, we didn't have, right now, we had one approved out of like ten sites we turned in. Uh, five is a no, and I give them, and three is pending, because the system went down, uh, to do one, and he's not really finished, uh, but I just give it up, take it, but, uh. He did say one was approved, and that's that one on Old Blue Road, uh, Kevin, I guess your area, that old Blue, uh, Mr. Seager, I was at Seager like eight twenty-nine, Old Blue Road. Uh, that one's approved, the problem is, three is pending, and I'll give those next four, and he wants that to go up there.
Because, because Donald, okay.
No, I'm just.
Because, because Donald, when, when you get that information, it's gonna be in writing, why they wouldn't approve?
Yes, he always puts in why they're not, yeah.
I need, I need to see that.
Okay. I'll send it out to all of them, uh, once we receive it, I'll send it out to all of those guys.
Alright.
That's all I have.
Anybody got anything else from Mr. Donald?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Donald, excuse me, uh. I'm just gonna name one of these, and I'm gonna give, give the rest of you after the meeting, but I got, uh, limbs on ninety-six steam plant and one sixty-three steam plant, and the rest of this list, I'll just give it to you after the meeting, I'm not gonna go through this whole list.
Limbs?
It's for limbs.
Yeah. Mr. Milton, River Road, this guy.
No, forty-seven Mizzou.
Uh-huh.
Uh, just want you to check that ditch.
Forty-seven Mizzou, this is, yeah, it's off the form, we're gonna get back started, I got one job, I need to finish one.
Sorry, you're not done yet, are you?
No, I got, I did.
Allowed to somebody already.
Well, I told him this.
He'll be there Monday morning.
I gotta finish one job, and then I'll get it that way.
Before you play.
Sometime this week.
You still not ready for that dump truck?
Not yet, but I do need it when I start.
You brought up fire hydrants. Would you check on that one on Providence Road? Talk to the office about it, it's actually a city hydrant. Um, but I wrote you there Friday, and it not been replaced yet.
On Providence, it's the city?
Yeah, Mary Ann and the ignore button.
Mr. President, right, uh, up West Wilderness, I forgot the side street name, well, we got a no dumping sign down there, I seen you a picture, we dumped all this stuff down there. What we gonna do about it?
Have to get it up, to do that, any little dump site can. Try to put, I've been looking at cameras with the gray to put out, to go to the cell phone, I'd like to get somebody in the county, you know, that works to put it on, you know, a phone or whatever, what we can monitor and then. Do, and I think we approach them to our illegal dump grant, while I know we can, cameras, to the grant, and then try to get it by three, to put out throughout the county, because I think it's gonna help us.
Well, yeah.
Bottoms only get worse.
My opinion is, and, and, and till we, uh, catch somebody and put a big fine on them, and let them know we serious about this illegal dumping, and they gonna continue to dump.
Well, and talking about that, Scott, the question is, like on, um, Seal Road, where we went and cleaned that up and got a name, and they go talk to them. Can, even though they give them a citation or whatever, we go to court or whatever over, can we charge them for us, our time I cleaned it up too, on top of the fine?
Yeah, the, if the court awards it, your title to restitution or the.
Just keep up with our time, and what we doing it, we doing it, add that to, I think it's a thousand dollar fine that the board if it agreed on, just add that to it.
If they're known guilty, yeah.
Okay.
That's principled issue.
Alright.
Alright, thank you, Robert.
Alright, good morning, Board, um, a couple of updates, and one was, uh, more time roll phase one, we submitted P S E documents back to M Doc on Thursday. Uh, I think we addressed their comments, um, now they asking for some write away information, so I did get in write away information from, uh, Mr. Slover, so we're gonna update that portal. Now, once we update that portal, and they're gonna automatically send an F email to Ms. Lewis, and if you would, just print that document out and send it to me, and I will submit it to M Doc to try to get that write away certification. The deadline is approaching, so they're asking us to submit those documents, so I plan to have it, I'm gonna submit it back to them tomorrow, and you should be emailed shortly after.
Just email it to you?
Yes, ma'am, and I will send it to, uh, to Ms. Lewis.
Okay, we'll do that.
Alright. Um, uh, Bird Road, our survey is working with the survey from, uh, from the, from the, um, survey from the, uh, from the state, and, uh, to give write away question they have, trying to get those answered, something that they, if they change survey or something like that. And he's revision information from the Plasminius district that we submitted a long time ago, so our survey is coordinated with their survey. Um, the contractor did address all those erosion items that often I even went out on last week, while I was giving hours, yes, and everything's fine, so through these payments to the contractor for that project. Um, I have false amount, we submitted quote requests for the fire rails to add wood fencing and varner construction. Um, I anticipate getting quotes back from them about first in August. And then the last thing I have is, I received an email, um, about the notice award for Upper Kingston Road E W P project, which would be project number C zero one one. And we're just requesting a board authorization to allow the board president to sign the notice award, any of, any pre-award documents for that project, and that's Upper Kingston Road.
Okay, you heard the request?
Some.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins. Second by Mr. Milton, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names, motion carries?
And that's all I have, I did leave with N R C S on some E W Ps that are out, but we did, we had a ribbon that the projects are good to go, some minor adjustments regarding the replacement of pipe on the gumbar body, and, um, just a minor changes to old highway for segment one, and we'll be ready to go for the open project.
Alright.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob.
Hey.
Good morning, Board. Devante, I T Department, so I was here to present, uh, the garbage picked up on, and this is garbage picked up on, I wasn't presenting it on here, but I am having some technical difficulty, difficulties. Now, we have some printouts, if anyone would like any.
If you have the, the complaints.
Correct, yes, sir.
I'd like to.
Sure. Got complaints, sorry, here.
Everybody's complaining, can't get over the office.
So hopefully this, uh, fixes that issue, um, key, um, U S N X, they do a lot of heavy lifting, uh, background work on our website. Um, this is the same thing as our I T workar system, or the B system, where someone go online, get some needed information they need. So here, essentially, through those we acquire, uh, the resident, they'll see the, uh, complaint form, as you can see on the second page. Um, the county contact, which I imagine will be Mrs. Shay Riley, and once that resident submits a complaint, Mrs. Shay Riley will receive that, uh, information, as well as the trash company contact. And we ran some tests on that, so, once that's submitted, as you can see on the next form, they printed their name, address, phone number, the email, they also put in the dates that the garbage was missed, whether it's Monday or Thursday, or I can't recall the other pickup days, um, end up at the time of business. After that, it's pretty much straightforward, you can go, you can look on the last sheet, you have to put it over. Um, Lashay will receive that information, kind of like a ticket, and so it's the garbage company, and they have so many days to answer, uh, that complaint form. Now, we have it set to where it doesn't exceed four hundred dollars, but for every day that the garbage is not picked up, after the report that it's missed, it's one hundred dollar fine. Um, as well, all that pricing be totaled out, so let's say we have, you'll see my name on the back, you see Keith's name, that submitted a complaint, and there's a couple of days that his, those prices add up. Um, so, at the top, you see four hundred, next you see two hundred, my total for the testing, we have twelve hundred. Um, now, they can answer that as well, so once the ticket is answered, you'll be, you're, well, the person who submitted the ticket, they're receiving their receipt, that, okay, they got the garbage complaint. And then it's up to the trash company to go ahead and answer their complaint, but if they don't, that's when the fines start to take place, their fine will go up to four hundred, uh, until that, uh, ticket is answered.
Okay.
And we set it to four hundred typically because we don't expect for them to really take that long to pick up the garbage. Once it's, the plane's sent, I mean, they should handle it as soon as possible, otherwise, it's gonna, the fines will go up.
Okay.
And I can send all that out in the email, or on a presentation, and it'll, that it.
So how long for you to have this up and running?
Oh, it's good to go, um, I just, I just wanted to show you all, and get your permission to launch it.
Okay. We need a motion for that?
We have to, you already just do it online, didn't you?
Oh, I need a motion to start up the garbage complaints website.
Certainly.
Moved by Mr. Milton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gray, any more discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, um, how do we go about getting this information out to the people that are residents?
So, uh, we're gonna put on the, uh, website, it'll be on the front page of the website, at the very bottom, uh, right beside these, and I T work orders, that's what we're gonna put that, as far as getting information out. Um, I did give a copy to Miss Jane, I don't know if that's something you have to run the top of the morning, or how you are going to school about that, um, but it'll be on the main website.
I'm more concerned about the citizen, senior citizens, and don't use the computer and website.
That's right.
And how would they do this?
Uh, that I didn't think about.
Because I have a lot of them in my area.
Grandchildren.
Yeah, yeah, they could do that.
I mean, they can still call in, if they call in, should.
That, that's.
Should sanitation be added?
That's the idea, if they can call this Miss Riley, I can imagine she could take that information.
They pretty much doing that now, but if, they doing that now, but if we got something up to date, uh, how would Miss Riley?
I, I, I've tried ten times, can't get in touch with anybody over.
Or sanitation phone?
Devante, is, I think this may be a question for, um, temptation, but when they send out the monthly, um, invoices or whatever, is there, is there a place they can put a note on, on it?
I can ask them.
They, they, so.
Yeah, just, just a note, maybe on the cou, the next couple of cycles, just, you know.
Cause I have.
You can y'all go online and sell it or something like that.
Okay. That's how we do it. How you doing?
Yeah. Let's get out to this.
Need to hear the message.
Alright, uh, all in favor? Any names, motion carries?
Appreciate it, Rob. Oh, I have some, Devante.
Yes, ma'am.
President Wilson.
Yes.
I was gonna give this in my report, but since he's here, uh, at the conference, they talked about the cyber stop, uh, cyber security. Uh, we are up to date with cyber security, right, probably?
So, we use, um, SOFOS, and I just need to do that license, maybe a month or so, though, and I do have that updated, and of course, we still have our SARS laws as well.
Okay, because they was talking about all the attacks that people are getting.
Yes, ma'am.
With this cyber security, so I did bring this back to you, because there goes a way that we can get some funding forward, and some training and stuff like that, so.
I would love to do training, uh, or if you come with me.
Yeah, you can come here, yes, yeah.
I would personally love to do training, typically what I've been doing lately, I send out an email to everyone, just how to go about looking out for spam emails, it's easy to miss if you're not paying attention, but I mean, it's not really that hard either, if you just, a lot of times, they'll send emails, competition, um. The email can be cardiovastler122999 at gmail dot com, obviously, that's not a legit email. Um, a lot of times, they're trying to solicit payment, rarely, rarely, we might get a, a link, a zip file link, when I was at City Nash's, um, someone clicked a link at the police department, and it gave us uh, about us, essentially. We were able to take care of it, of course, after a couple of days, but that's type of stuff you look out for. They're always wanting to go for emails, so they're counting on people not knowing what to look out for. So lately, I've been sending emails out just to tell people, hey, this is what you look for, watch, you know, when you go on websites, if you're working, watch pop up clips and links, and if they do see anything, send me the email, so I can block that email, so they can't email us again. But I will put those.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
For, for you ladies, Mr. President, uh, I remember uh, one conference we went to, they were talking about A I. And this conference that uh, there was one of the main topics, so at, at one conference, they said you need to be careful, and then at this conference, A I is not going nowhere, you need to try to find a way to uh, utilize A I, make A I this, make A I that, so uh, you up to speed on this A I stuff?
I keep up with it, uh, most of it, husband buddy and I, he's big into it, uh, but no, it's not going anywhere, it's gonna continue to progress pretty rapidly. We don't really have any uh, services here that's need A I, maybe down the road, um, you know, it depends on, we have what? Uh, tax collectors and the courthouse, uh, but I don't see them needing for them to use it. Uh, are you more so worried about, uh, what are your main concern with it, like?
I, I really didn't have a concern, but they was mentioning how sheriff departments and divided departments and all these other uh, departments are utilizing A I.
Of course, right.
I'm just trying to figure out.
I see what you're saying, yeah, they can.
Maybe even the road department, you know what I'm saying? I'm trying to figure out, how can we get our best use out of A I? Cause at one time, we was talking about putting something in place, but if, if, if it's gonna be this important and, and, and we need it, then we need to try to find a way to make it work for us.
Well, example, uh, from my job, if I run into a snag on something that I haven't come across, I use uh, Chat G P T or Google's Gemini A I. And I talk to it like it's a real person, hey, um, this, this, this is going on, uh, pretend to be an I T specialist, and what's the best way I can work around this and use it as a guide, so I don't know if the road department could find some use of that, if they run into an issue, um, or any other department, but that's a good way to utilize it.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'll say this, do not use Chat G P T for legal questions.
Yes.
If, I'm not kidding, it totally mixed up the answers, I sometimes spend an hour on the phone with a potential client, because I'm arguing with Chat G P T.
That's a larger trouble.
Keep his job. So you get one to call me, I'm in college.
Yeah, I'll call right you, and if he can't answer.
Okay, y'all got anything else for uh, Devonte? Appreciate it, man.
Okay, thank you.
Who's next? Next.
Good morning, how are you doing?
Good morning.
I have two employees that need to receive raises, uh, Kari Winston and Zachary Washington. I have a signed copy of the pay lo forms, y'all don't have.
Yeah, I need, cause I don't, I don't think you can, they give to me.
That's good, huh, you would have S O F O?
Just time, just, just time to see.
Time, sure.
All right, so, Kari Winston and Zachary Washington, um. Um, sour lace thirteen fifty, is that?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's actually, yeah.
Oh, so that, that's a little step up.
Yeah, that's their normal step, yeah, that's the last one.
Yeah.
Not necessarily a rush.
Yeah.
All right, seen a motion.
It's a race for, it's a race for them, I'm sure they appreciate.
Move by, second by Mr. Gaines.
Yeah.
Uh, any discussion, all in favor? Any names, motion carries?
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I noticed in your followers, uh, has some information from right past the Duncan, um, it's a lot to read, so you'll have, for a couple weeks now, you can look at it, it has all of their report updates, has all the supplemental reports that go with it. It has um, drawings and these came out of the meeting, um, with Buddy John's group, position where a building could be out at the Jordan property, and hopefully at the next meeting, we'll have uh, some sort of estimate, uh, using the land, using the buildings, uh, where we're headed to build in the chat.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, board. I only have one thing, that's a new hire for a jailer, uh, time by H R. Somebody had Darren Harris, a pay rate of thirteen twenty-three an hour, annual rate of twenty-seven thousand five hundred and eighteen, uh, and this will be uh, for an open slot that we have.
So.
Move by Ms. Hutchins.
Yeah.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion, all in favor? Any names, motion carries?
The only other thing I wanted to bring the board up to date on, you were talking about A I, uh, Project Noah has now integrated A I into their system, where they now track people and vehicles throughout all the cameras that are in the Noah system. We can't do it from our end, but we can send them a picture of the car or the person, uh, and they're able to run it through the system and, and track it, uh, going through all their cameras. So that, that is something that, we've actually assisted the police department on the last shoot they had here downtown, and the, one of the vehicles, I know for a fact, they tracked it all the way out into another area, using those cameras. So, we're pretty benefited. That's all I have, if y'all have any questions from that.
Yeah, um, I did have a question, but uh, and it was concerning what happened out in Kingston, and I, I, I just, I'm just gonna be honest with you, I was at a conference, and uh, I didn't know what was going on, and people started coming up to me with phones and breaking news and all this kind of stuff, and, and uh, I, I don't know if she came to me or I came to her, but we, we didn't know what was going on, so we couldn't talk to nobody about nothing, cause we ain't know what was going on. Then I later seen in the newspaper where uh, the Mississippi Bureau of Investigation and the F B I is being contacted.
That is correct, so what we wanted to do is, we wanted full transparency and not to feel like the public feel like anything was being covered up one way or another. Uh, cause you had groups on both sides making those accusations. So we brought in the I A N, they worked side by side with us, conducted the interviews, one of the N D I agents is also on the F B I task force. Uh, so they were looking at hate crime possibilities under the federal statute, and then we were looking at other charges uh, under the state statutes, and had their expertise in from the very get go on the interviews during the courtship investigation.
So this is still going on?
We pretty much wrapped everything up, but it, it is still open, yes, sir, there may be an additional arrest at some point in the next year.
Well. Um. You know, since I've been in office, I've been talking about crime, and trying to find a way to curb crime, because I'm not saying that we one of the major crime cities it is, I'm not saying that, but we do have crime in our community. Uh, and I even saw what the mayor said, that he was gonna lobby uh, his organization for, a lot was dealing with getting bonded out and, and, and in the crime lab, that we all been complaining about the crime lab for years and years and years. Uh, I don't know. The justice system, uh, the way it operate, the way it's supposed to operate, that you innocent until proven guilty. And, and, and the burden of proof rests on the prosecutor. But I've been here a long time, and in some cases, people are guilty before they even go to court. And only thing I'm saying is, I, I just want everything to be just like you said, open and transparent, and uh, everybody get, be given the same opportunity, because when, when, when you go out here saying that somebody did a crime, and we, we, I ain't gonna say you don't have no evidence, but it comes from the community, the community say, well, I know Rita Gray did it, and, and this did, but when it's time to come to court, don't nobody show up for court. And, and the court only go by what you bring to them. If you don't, beyond a reasonable doubt, find somebody guilty, then they gonna be innocent, they, they gonna get away, I'm not gonna say they guilty, not guilty, but they gonna get away. I'm just saying this, it's, it's so quiet around here, and, and uh, I, I don't know what's going on, and let y'all handle y'all business, but I just want this community to know, we gotta get this right. We gotta get it right. Not only is Adams County looking, but the whole United States looking now, because how many people came up to you? Everybody got smart, whatever that on their phone, and it was hitting everybody's phone, hey, 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 did you say you from Adams County? I was here, what's, what's going on down in Adams County, which we didn't know, so. We can't hide this, and we gotta get it right.
So we're trying to do everything.
Oh, I know, I'm not saying that.
To get it right, but we're not gonna try a case in the public.
I, I agree, that's reason I said, when I saw something in the newspaper, when it seemed like they was trying to try a young man in the public, when he hadn't even been in the court. I just want justice to be fair all the way around, whether you black, white, blue, green, or gray. Let the system work itself out, and let race have nothing to do with whether we work this thing out, that's all I'm saying. I ain't saying nothing about our sheriff department or nothing like that, don't get that wrong, but I just want everything to be honest, open, and fair, whether you live on Daisy Street or whether you live downtown. Cause I've been here a long time, and I see sometimes people have a lot of energy. When something happens somewhere else, then the energy they have when it happen on the north side of town. Everybody ain't gonna say this, but I'm gonna say it, but it need to be the same energy, I'm gonna give you a perfect example, don't need this long. This young man, a terrorist came to town, they say he shot at a terrorist, they locked him up, now I don't even know if he ever got out.
He is still in jail, dealing with mental evaluation.
Still in jail.
In the court system right now.
Still in jail. You didn't hit him, you just shot at him, and that's aggravated assault or whatever, whatever that is. But then, other people can get the same charge, and they able to burn out, they able to do whatever the case may be, to get out of jail. I just want this system to be fair for everybody, whether you got money or not, whether you know somebody or not. That's all I'm saying, and I'm not talking about the sheriff department, I'm just talking about the era we living in, thank God for cell phones. That's all I'm saying.
Anybody got anything else for uh, Shane? Thank you, thank you. Any more departmental reports? Public comments, oh, okay. Boy, you just snuck in the back door, didn't you?
I apologize for being so late.
Thank you all, love it. I'll be quick. I, cause I just got this in the e, emails this weekend, this is from cop instruction on home grant. Um, we had that uh, change order approved for Ms. Lucille Smith, and that sixty-five hundred dollars, he's gonna be completing that this week. And then, I got an invoice for that, and then on Ms. Barbara Smith's, he has removed that uh, that home, and has placed the pad. So I've got a twenty-five percent completion invoice on that, at twenty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. These will both be contingent on this inspector, inspecting these when they're completed, but what I wanted to do is go ahead and get these, because of the timeframe of, you know, getting this contract paid, is go ahead and get this through the board contingent on inspector approving the work. I need a motion. Move by Ms. Hutchins.
Next.
Second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion?
Yes, you said they have removed Ms. Barbara Smith?
That's what Caesar Conus told me, and that he's gonna place the pad, uh, with the pad this week, and should have the home installed by next week.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Don't forget that it meant uh, when the home is installed.
You got it. All in favor? Uh, any names, motion carries? That's all I got. All right, you got anything for the inside, or you just? Yeah, I don't even have a cash question yet, I'll give that to you. All right. Thank you to you too. All right. All right. Public comments? Public comments? No public comments? Okay, come to the table, it's great.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, um, I, um, I, I, I love my community, that's why I'm here, that's why I was chose to do this. I'm one hundred percent for, if possible, getting cameras everywhere we can get them, cause if you do the crime, you, you need to be punished. But you need to be proven guilty and be punished. So Shane, uh, 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 we can get camp, some of these areas, like I read in the newspaper, uh, somebody got shot on Beaumont. We had a whole big city thing when I was with the city to clean up Beaumont, why is not a camera on Beaumont? I mean, everybody knew what was going on back in the days on Beaumont, seemed like that shit had been one of the first places they had a camera, but I guess it's not over there. Mr. Dollar, um, Kudzu. Just check out Kudzu Land, that Kudzu is going out there.
Kudzu.
And uh, I don't know, at the end of, of Zania Rain, I don't know what's going on down there, we got a no dumping site down there too, and look like they just dumping there for some reason. Uh, I was glad to see that house on Second Street, Scott, somebody, I guess bought that house, and they remodeling that house.
Old town is looking good.
And they got it looking good, and grass looking good, and I wish a lot more people can invest in, 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 in buying these old properties and fixing them up like that. Oh, you bought it?
No.
Oh, okay. And last, uh, I got a serious grass problem at twenty-three Parson.
Twenty-three right now?
Parson. Parson. Grass look like it's no grown up over a treble. And, and, and Mr. Dollar, when you go down, uh, Booker, we got Booker Road, we got limbs need to be picked up. And my sympathy goes out to the Day family, the Alexander family, the Webster, Walker, Mackey, Duck Junior, um, had a classmate pass, again, I had one pass two weeks ago, now I got another one passed, we had her friend, uh, Marshall Credit Young, uh, one of my longtime cowboy friends, and I miss his friend, uh, Mr. Fred Fuller. Um, the Fleming, the Cameron, and uh, this is amazing, the lady that had the accident. The lady that had the accident, was that at the Chevron or whatever that was out there?
Exxon.
Exxon. She had called me two days before she had the accident, about she needed me to look at something for her. And then I got a call from somebody saying that the lady had an accident and she died in that accident. So my sympathy goes out to the Wilson family. And, uh, I used to help out with basketball for Natchez High School. Northern Natchez, Natchez High from nineteen eighty-four till Mary Jean Urban died and after she died. And I think, uh, was Sandra Tillman still working for the county? She wasn't? Okay. I know she used to work over here.
She used to work for nine-one-one, and, um, she was in the justice court.
Okay, yeah. She pays. And they had her friend, and it's running football basketball play. And I think, I think that, oh, I got a Bible verse I wanna read today. Jeremiah twenty-three and one, woe to the shepherd who feed themselves and not the people. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. That's all.
I don't know. I guess I let Mr. Ford get out of here. I was gonna ask about state aid, uh, funds. You know, how far we with this here, uh, state aid, uh, funds, whether we gonna start using the state aid funds and stuff like that. Just wanted to know because I know we need to get this spent. Like they said, we need to spend this money before things started going up. The cost of, things started going up, and we don't, you know, got this money spent.
I would hope that asphalt stuff's going down, oil prices like they are.
Asphalt, asphalt here is going down.
It should.
Did you say it should, but it's not?
I'm getting a sixty-seven dollar bare minimum, not eighty-seven, so it should go down.
I went to Rankin County the other day, uh, Rubber Man Association, and I saw they giving it laid on one oh five.
Yeah, they, that's what I'm saying there. For one oh five a week, analysis what?
We back buying for that about, it's plant, us picking it up for about that price.
Right. And, and what is?
So these contractors need to change the pricing.
It's up there. That's what I'm talking about. It's up there.
That hundred twenty-five thousand dollars a mile, whatever needs to go away.
It's higher than that.
So it's for asphalt, you're saying?
Yeah. Asphalt should go down among the main products, and it is oil, so it's down twenty-five percent.
It hasn't gone down here.
We got our contractors still, I think it's about a hundred, I think we paid about a hundred, hundred five, I was picking it up. And as far as say Rankin County pay, they had to get it laid.
How much you say that's been laid?
Two forty.
Two forty.
Two hundred forty thousand dollars.
Two forty.
They're the only game in town.
Yeah.
So, uh, it, it, it just looks like we gonna have to do something different, uh, because I remember in the past.
Well, they're talking, Ricky, they answered y'all's questions. Like I said, we went to that meeting the other day. We had a lot of questions to talk about our association, what they're paying, and what people doing. Bringing in little plant and setting up in the area. Only deal is trying to get a grab, you know, mixed with, they're having to buy from somebody, but they are trying to put up some little plants on site and do the job. So that's gonna give us another avenue.
So have anybody been actually talked to the people local, let them know that, uh?
You know, we tried that time, and we didn't get anywhere.
We can try again. And we, if, 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 we got a lot of projects we gotta do, so we just need to start. I hate to say this because I'm, I'm all about shopping locally. But if, if they gonna overcharge us, and we can get it cheaper from somewhere else, maybe we need to go somewhere else and, 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 and do what's best for the county.
It's not only a local company, it's a, it's a nationwide conglomerate. The problem we have is asphalt can't be, you can't buy it from New Jersey and bring it here.
Yeah.
So, so they bring, bring in portable asphalt, which is where they're based going to. It'd be a lot easier. They have big jobs. They, they, they'd be a lot cheaper.
That would be right. Okay, uh, the other thing I had, I was gonna talk about decided stop, uh, secured, but I gave that to Devonte. Um, another thing is I need to get approved, um, travel for the board members to attend the MAS Ball Conference, uh, October the eighth. And, um, need to get approved also the Mississippi Policy Conference in Tunica on August the seventh.
Alright. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Second, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries?
Um, so probably, uh, I was riding out looking at some of the, uh, rows, on some of the roads. We need to kind of get some trees cut back off of the roads because limbs are leaning across the road. And if we get a hard rain or a wind, they gonna come down. So we need to kind of get some trees cut back off the roads. And that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Ms. Gaines?
Um, right up, granted to some, well, then I have two things in mind when running into folks in Broadmoor on King Circle. Do you know anything about fire hydrants, over and out about three years, something like that?
No, I just brought it up in my report, uh, more from a fire hydrant. I tell you why you here. We gonna do seventy-nine stain plant, Gaylor Liberty in North Austin. In the next few weeks, we get all the fire hydrants, but I don't know anything about that. I mean, it's where?
It's, um, let's say she's off of King Circle. Um, said fire hydrant has been, uh, hit, and it wasn't, um, it wasn't, I, I wasn't kind of aware, I was out cutting some red, and I guess that was, she was riding through, she was looking for the Wilsons. Uh, daughter, after the lady had the, uh, accident, 'cause I didn't actually know. She said it was her step, uh, godchild, something she told me about fire hydrant. And also, I don't know, out sixty-one, uh, I have what, the old sixty-one highway was seven road there?
Mm-hmm.
So, did that state account?
I don't know if I've ever seen it been turned back over to the county, you know what I'm saying? I don't know. But I know the side of the county, right?
The side, well, what it is, uh, I did get a call from a constituent. She said somebody was parking a truck. She said it wasn't a problem of parking a truck, but she said her husband picking up the trash. But then, it's state contractor, somebody had a con, I rolled out there to look, and it was a contractor, like it was milling asphalt or something. That's why.
That's what I said.
And that's why I said I knew it.
Turn it back to us. It's not, uh, yeah.
But we need it, but if, if it's anything.
I call the state. They're, they're delivering out the trail when they park.
Well, she said it's litter, it ain't just trucks. She said it's litter. She said, she said, well, it sounds like it could be that people parking trucking, and people parking equipment too, so I don't know, I don't. I just got, it's got, we got another problem out there, and, uh, they picked it up. So, yeah, um, but I do, uh, it's, it's just a lot of things going on in, uh, on the Morgantown road. We did have a meeting, uh, uh, kind of update our business piece of what we got, what we got. We are coming to, uh, a lot of the problem that they ran into, and we, but hopefully, we gotta come together. Uh, Mr. Jones had, which we do know, they ran into water line, they went in there. Every kind of utility out there, so they had some days over, and he had some, uh, incurred expenses. But I think, um, they were on the table to talk about maybe the offsetting with the days. Uh, he got off, and the days of what was over later. So that conversation is probably trying to start to get a, some kind of figure on it. And, uh, hopefully, we probably need to call another meeting to see, uh, I don't know what the new plan of everybody. We need to get the city so we can move forward. Uh, the second side of the plan was, uh, to mill and overlay and fix existing drainage and, uh, driveways on the phase one that's from Wal, was it CBS, two Dixon? Cause we had this water land begun that, and, uh, hopefully with weather, he says August to September, that part of the road should be complete. Uh, with that, so it'll be good, we can kind of move forward with, uh, with some of that. And, uh, so that's, I know that's, that's actually good news for the residents. And I do, you know, we still have some residents. Uh, I can say, uh, thank you to some of the Morgantown residents, yeah, I see them, and they asked about it. But they have been patient, and which the road need doing for twenty years. But the contractor said that they had been really nice to him, and he was thinking that there was gonna be a lot more, uh, edge with him, but it hadn't. And, uh, so just hold on a little while longer, and, uh, work is still moving forward. But I, say, um, I heard about the incident in Kingston, and, um, probably a couple days later, 'cause I didn't know anything. But I'll say this, as a community, we have had a pretty good community. And it's some people for right, the right thing to do. And I always say, start with yourself. Because it's not a color on, or race on wrongdoing. There is not right, it's right and wrong, and then there's the truth in the middle of it. So you can have bad people in, 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 in an ethnic group. But we as a people of a community, we have to do the right thing to trying to keep our community moving forward. And just like anything else, it's life. Uh, problems happen in life. We don't live life every day problem free. Most of your most valuable lessons come out of problem and trouble. So, you know, if I offer you something, you might take it, and with not as much value. But if you work for something, it means more value. And that's what I'm saying. But to keep our community where is it? We as a people need to continue to work to keep our community great. And that means stand up for what's right, what's right, no matter who it is, who it affects. We have to stand for what's right. And we still have to, I think, the sheriff, and he did say he was gonna be transparent. And they did do things to be transparent. I don't have any problems. And I do understand, uh, during the process, especially when the time that we live in, things do get, uh, emotions grow over hand. But we also gotta understand, for righteousness and justice, we not, we don't live in a lawless community. We live in a community, in a country that's governed by laws. And we have to allow the system sometimes to work to keep the things down. And our system don't work right. I mean, we know, um, it's hiccups and everything. But I'm asking the community to continue to pray that things go right, that we can move forward with our community. Yeah, we are in the national spotlight, but we live in this community as constituents. We live here. It's our community. So we need to look within, deep within ourself to move right, to do the right thing for us and this community, and doing the right thing for us. Right thing for us is the right thing for everybody, when you are looking for the right things to happen. So, you know, I give a throw behind it. Mr. President?
Thank you, Ms. Gaines.
Mr. President, uh, can I say one thing right quick, before I forget? Uh, I forgot to congratulate Tony Fields on his, uh, completion of his superintendent leadership of county training.
Uh, Scott, Cartridge Point Road.
Where they talk about the?
That'd be like to, I'm gonna go. So, on Cartridge Point Road, the tax map shows that meandering that comes across. We start looking at the front Cartridge Point Road. So we start looking at the deed records, and there's a deed back in nineteen eighty-four that was granted to Indian County. And, uh, there's minute entry as well, probably November eighty-three, where the supervisor there was gonna acquire that portion of the right of way. Um, that, that portion's currently gated off. I think the county's used it time to time when the road's been blown out. So I was gonna send the deed to the landowner and just say, "Hey, we can talk about whether this is a county easement or not." And I'll set it up all the way.
Um, we've got a mess down there. We've got to find a way to route people trying to make a living. Uh, people trying to access the property. And, you know, I don't know how, how much work we got down there for this month. A little hard work. If there's easement there, we're gonna, we're gonna ease through it.
Who owns that property? Is that the shoe shower, or is it below the shoe shower?
It is. Sorry, I'm on there. I'm wrong, Johnson.
He needs to put that in a?
Joyce Johnson. It's a rentable home.
Well, he's put that in some kind of wildlife deal, any of your?
Yeah, he put it in a tree grove.
Tree grove.
For a half, uh.
Will it still subject all deeds, whether written or not?
By prescription, so.
I'll shoot your, I'll shoot your everything. You take a look and see.
Okay, thank you. Well, did you wanna talk about what you were trying to do at the extension office?
I can.
Well, I mean, I can. Ms. Lawrence called me, and she's, they're trying to open up to the left of that building, there's like a greenhouse. And they're gonna kind of bring it back, and then she's wanting to move to that dumpster. Um, the only place I've seen, I've written down there, the only place that I've seen it can go is to the right of the building. Jason was kind of parked over there one day. And if that's where it's gonna go, we might need to just put a little rock there. Um, but none of that's a big issue, so I think just whenever you get a pity, just let us know.
And, and I've also requested, uh, Mr. Silver, the, uh, plat of that, so we know what's there. That property is nine point something, almost ten acres, to the dumpster side of, of that property. I know there's a lot of, like, what, a hundred acres out there? And I'm talking about right there at the, uh, extension office. And also, is the extension office owned by the county and leased to the state? And I need to know how long is that lease? If we put something up, and the, you know, spend money and put something up, and then MSU moves somewhere, you know, we don't have an anchor. They're, they're kind of our anchor there, the extension circle.
We'll get something, Scott, I'll get Scott, move it back here.
Yes, not leased. It's a part of our county extension office.
Yes. But it's owned by the county.
It is definitely owned by the county.
What are we doing? Putting a what?
The, she wants to upgrade the greenhouse, is that right?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna present this, and I'm just doing some, uh, preliminary footwork. But, uh, we want to make, so y'all got a heads up, don't squittle on me. An outdoor educational classroom, open to everybody. It'll be handicap accessible. They can come and learn how to do gardening, and all kinds of stuff like that. Plant seed, grow lettuce in your, at your house, you know, maybe mushroom farming, 'cause we'll start beginning with that too. But anyway, it's gonna be, uh, handicap accessible, and we want to put up some shady cloth on the side of that building. We already have the shady cloth. I mean, just, we just haven't had it. So, we, and, and then when I saw that land, that ten acres, I said, "You know what? We could make a walking trail." And I don't think we can make it handicap accessible. But we could make a walking trail, and there's about ten acres there, and highlight Mississippi native plants in that area. Clean it up a little bit.
Let, let me ask a question. Uh, it sound good. Are, are y'all, are you working with whoever's in charge down there?
I'm working with him. I'm not in charge. This is, this is.
No, I'm talking about Jason. Is, is he in charge?
He's not in charge, you know, it's on the grounds.
No, uh, what extension is on there?
Extension circuit is.
Yeah. Are y'all working together?
I'm sure we are, because we, we want him in on it. I am so preliminary, I shouldn't even be talking. But I, uh, we've already talked with him some about where the shady cloth would go. So yes, he's, he's aware of what we're, we're planning to do. We're very preliminary right now. Like, I'm just trying to. We're very preliminary right now, like I'm just trying to get how much land is there, who owns this building.
Main thing I was trying to help her with was trying to get the dumpster moved and come get access to it.
Well, this is all pretty true.
I I I don't have a problem with it, but she need to be working with, what they got there?
Jason.
I didn't say you, but I'm just, if you work with Jason, then y'all could move the dumpster. You had to come, I could move the dumpster, right?
We could get the cameras and wax, put some rock there.
Okay.
And and when when we know for sure, we're we're gonna come here and present this to the board of what we wanna do and and how it will benefit the community. But if the lease is up for MSU in a year, we'd be wasting our time, so that that's why we wanted that information.
Okay. Just lose.
Oh, I sent you items, I'd like to have the G tax exemption settlement.
Need a motion. Move by Mr. Milton.
Aye.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays, most carries?
And then I have the August bonds for Robbie Dollar and Mr. Chapman.
Need a motion, red bonds across the board. Move by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Sessions. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays, most carries?
That was all, thank you.
Mr. Silver.
The Chancery Court was provided a certificate by the Mississippi Secretary of State as to erroneous tax sales. The state under statute can do this, in which case if that's done, the Chancery Court needs to note it in the deed records. Have you done that or what you missed? She needs to note the land records and then the tax accessory needs to go to, to reassess these properties.
Does that need to be spread across the minutes?
It is, just for recording purposes if she's received this notice. There's no formal, we're not doing anything other than at this place where we can record this notice.
You heard her request? Ms. Sessions. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays, most carries?
There was a notice of brownfield award. Uh this is in no formal action of the board, but uh Department of Environmental Quality is awarding a brownfield cleanup on a Trace Town uh development. And there's forty-five days for any public comments on that. Um I will pass it around. It was really just a big agreement about cleanup on it. I'm not sure what the details of there are, but if anyone wants to take a look at it, you certainly can make public comments. We have forty-five days to do so.
You say Trace Town?
At Trace Town, yes, sir.
Where it comes from the city?
Uh this is between N D Q and new Trace Town LLC. So it's it's under the law when you have a brownfield cleanup, N D Q has to advertise for it and solicit public comments. And this is basically saying, you know, and one of the things N D Q has given to the board of supervisors. So if y'all wanna take, take a look at it.
Before I forget, uh Mr. President, before I forget, uh every year we have, uh what is that, a tax sale or whatever it may be?
Yes, sir.
So when is that?
The tax sale will be the last Monday in August of the month.
So how do you go by getting a list of what's on the tax sale?
Okay, so there should have been a publication in the newspaper listing all properties that are up for sale.
Could you give me a list, sir?
I certain can.
Thank you.
There was an air week or so.
It should be the twenty fifth.
And and probably more importantly, Ricky, are properties that have been sold and are coming up where you can no longer redeem them. And I know that the Chancery Court's office, they don't, they have to advertise and have to send actual notice to people. But they also are calling people up, trying to reach them, try to get as many people as they can, say, hey, if you don't pay your taxes and redeem them, you really could lose them after this point.
Well, I like if it's in District Four and they got somebody on their list and they can't reach them, reach their supervisor and I'll find a way to reach them, cause people need to know exactly what's going on before they lose their property.
And that's, that's.
People be over there working over there, trying to get people property for a little amount because the people that's losing it don't understand what's going on. When their parents die, they couldn't say, well, uh 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 I ain't gonna have to start paying taxes. Well, as the supervisor, this former let them know before they lose it.
If if they genuinely lose it, they'll they'll get personally served and advertised and all that. But reaching out to them would be great. The more we can get redeemed, the better is for for everyone.
I'm gonna reach out.
You know, I feel the same way too. Let me say this, I feel the same way too, because I've had a few calls and saying, you know, people that have lost their property and say they've never gotten anything to say that, you know, they need to come in or do something like that. Or didn't even know how many years it takes before they even lose it.
So.
They don't even know.
So the way it all works is your property is sold, your taxes are due, let's say twenty twenty-four's taxes will be February first, twenty twenty-five. Then if they're not paid as the last first Monday of, I'm sorry, last Monday of August, they are sold for tax sales. Then you have two years to redeem your property. Once that redemption period is run, you you technically aren't supposed to allow to get your property back. And the tax purchaser then has a right to possession of the property. And a lot of tax sales can be set aside, even after that two-year period. If you happen, it's expensive, you gotta hire an attorney, you gotta set aside the tax sale. But two years from that date makes it extremely difficult if the tax purchaser has possessed that property because the statute limitations been run. So the redemption period is super important. If you can go ahead and redeem your your taxes, great. At any rate, you will owe interest at, I think it's half a percent now, they they lowered it to one percent. Either way, it's it's not a good loan to to make. And it goes to the tax purchaser, doesn't it, goes to the county, so.
It's a half percent recovery in August and then it goes to one and a half, one and a half.
One and a half.
Yeah, once it comes to that.
It used to be one percent and it's one and a half.
So they start up to one and a half percent.
No, it's eighteen, it's been eighteen percent. That's why people buy them at a tax sale.
Eighteen percent per year.
Uh for people that don't understand what's going on, so.
Well, a lot of them do and they just don't wanna pay it, they think they can get away with it.
I I wanna do that.
Yeah, it's two, the county's been able to have people that are owning property and paying taxes for certain.
Yeah, let me ask you a question while we're on this. So when somebody purchased a piece of property through the sale that that we talking about, why do they keep the stuff in those people names that they're purchasing it from? Why do they do that? Years later, it's still in the person name that they purchased it from, cause they don't wanna do what?
They gotta pay for a tax deed, which is like a hundred and fifty dollars, a hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then you've gotta clear the cloud title, be the, that probably costs, you know, two or three thousand bucks to have.
So why do they leave it in the person name that don't own the property?
They technically don't have to do anything until they're ready to sell it or do something with it, make a deed, add this. They don't wanna pay the money.
So we lose the money.
We don't lose any money.
And they see how you're paying taxes, right?
The county loses money on real property. We have, I think, a ninety-eight percent collection rate on real property because we have a tax sale and almost all of your properties are sold in a tax sale. So the county goes ahead and gets money. In fact, we get more because it's an over purchase on the tax sales, all done by auction. And if more money is paid than what's owed on taxes, the county actually gets the the overage of it. So the county's made whole by August of each year. The tax purchaser then stands to benefit if you redeem the property and they redeem it eighteen percent if they are.
Just saying me that, yes, thank you, sir.
There, Judge Davis has entered orders for his uh court reporters. He did break it down for percentages between Adams, Brooks and Jefferson and Klaver. And uh we like to report in the minutes. It's. The words, oh, Cassie, we're assigned two of them and and Davis signed one, I'm sorry, Judge Ward and Judge Davis did it.
You heard her request?
This sent my station.
Move by Ms. Gaines, second by Mr. Milton.
And these are. These are pretty good breakdowns, it has Adams's fifty and then the rest of the other fifty, that's better than what we've seen from some other ones.
All in favor? Any nays, most carries?
That's we all have.
Ms. Khan.
All right, um I need to do an intercompany loan to the help Southfield Insurance, temporarily. Um we had to pay some, uh Samaritan payment and so this one paperwork runs off. I sort of have another next time to pay that. And this is temporary, a hundred fifty dollars, thousand dollars.
You heard her request and question? Move by Ms. Gaines. Second by Mr. Milton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any nays, most carries?
I have an amendment, a budget amendment from um the Circuit Clark, uh Circuit Clark. She's just moving money from one account, almost five accounts into one account for twenty-three thousand dollars. Um so there's no increases, just moving money from one account.
All right, need a motion? Move by Mr. Milton, second by Ms. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? All right, any nays, most carries?
Okay, so we got the um lease purchase uh completed, had to uh see the check last Friday afternoon. We put it in general fund just to get it in the bank, but um requesting that we move it from the general fund to the um the road, one fifty road department fund, so we can pay um cap for the equipment that we purchased.
Simple check amount.
It's five, five hundred seventy-six thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents.
Move by Ms. Gaines. Second by Mr. Milton. Any discussion? All in favor?
Five hundred seventy-six thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents.
Thank you.
Now, the only caveat is.
Is there something, is this discussion, is something else?
I just, um we don't have the docket done yet, so um we need to pay this. So I don't know if y'all can pre-put the docket or if we can. Or we can, we need to have special meeting, but.
Chuck E. here?
No, Chuck E.'s on vacation, that's all we don't have it.
Just gotta do it, now we'll see if we can move it and.
Do we need to add that to the motion or just go and create a motion?
I think I would require the wait for Chuck E. to come back and do it because it's not just your straightforward. So we can just have a special meeting for that, give it five to five minutes or less.
Let let me ask you this question, where's this this money gonna come from?
We'll see if they'll.
It's a lease purchase. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna hold it.
We're gonna break it, this is where we're financing, we're gonna go, we're gonna break this one.
Okay, go create a motion.
So we we gonna wait, we gonna wait, cause we can't get the.
We're gonna create a motion as is.
Just to, just to move the money, that's all.
Yes, all in favor? Any nays, most carries?
I ask for giving, thank you, John, of course.
Okay, so then um we've got contractors that need to be paid for Bellwood. And um there was two of the um uh reimbursement without that were absolutely credited to one fifty and so moving those to Bellwood and then also making an interfund loan for three hundred fifteen thousand dollars. We're waiting on the uh M D A to reimburse, we have about three hundred and twenty-five, thirty thousand that we're waiting to get back. But these are all due for us, so we need to pay contractors.
Okay, heard her request?
Is that on the docket? Is that on the docket already? You just asked and pause.
I just asked him, I said, you have the money and then I think we'll do the docket, I just need the new command.
So sorry. I made, I made one, you know, I had to give.
Move by Ms. Gaines, second by.
All right, so 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 let me, so so Miss, I think where the where the misunderstanding and communication coming, you doing the right thing, you are not paying the contractor. You just moving the money.
Yes.
And then when you get on the docket, but I know you saying, I, you 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 were saying, I need to move the money to pay the contractor. But I think that kinda makes it confusing. So so you just, you just getting approval to move the money and then things will be done, that's why I'm saying. So that was my question, so you just, you just actually move the money.
I'm sorry, I'll.
No, no, you fine, no, 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 I was just trying to make sure we didn't have confusion so we could be on the same page. You just actually move the money and then we dock it, then we'll move the payment.
I just trying to get all the.
So so they send all of us up to to the county administrator, where they don't, they don't come in here and ask for this?
We can't do.
They're not here.
But we like on family.
No, 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 I'm talking about the people that we paying, you should come stand right there and ask for this, not the county administrator. So why are they not?
This is um reimbursement, well, let me rephrase that.
Now, this way county administrator transfer for Bellwood, this is responsible.
So they got, they told her to do this?
She's looking at bills that this board has approved.
Oh, we already approved.
There's no money in the fund.
Yeah, they're not really approved, it's just.
I didn't know.
A little bit money.
Yeah, that's.
Just a little money.
That's the way she said it.
That's why, that's why I tried to clarify, so we could.
Thank you, but that's.
But the contractor needs to be paid on, on these, some of them are from.
I know, I'm.
And then you get to all the dockets, the board is gonna be four, five pages. Okay, all in favor? Any nays, most carries? Anything else?
Um yes, so I have um Chandler, Nora, I am, Andy Gray will come and they talked about. This will be the final reimbursement that we are requesting from the IP clean uh cleanup site, yeah. Thirty-four thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty-five cents.
Need a motion? Move by Ms. Sessions. Second by Mr. Milton.
This is, this is IP cleanup, so this is the last of the two hundred.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's what, that's what I'm trying to figure out, yeah.
Vote for this this time, eh, but uh all these people need to come, if they ain't got time to come before this board, I'm gonna start voting no on this, but they need to make time to come before this board like everybody else.
This is a reimbursement.
I'm just gonna let it pass.
So I'm saying, this is a reimbursement.
Yeah, we need, that's us getting our money back.
That's what we're doing.
Oh, okay.
So we said.
Yeah, I need the money. I need the money.
All in favor? Any nays?
And then I just need, I don't think, I don't know if we have to put this in minutes or not, but this is the the paperwork for the lease purchase. Our copy, do you need to sign?
I I didn't sign our copy.
You didn't sign our copies.
Well, somebody didn't put it in front.
She just gave me a business.
But that's the, that's what we already approved.
Yeah, it's already approved, this is the paperwork.
Do we have the amendments?
Um Missy, I had a call about um the airport, uh got a bill outstanding on overhead doors. They had the two mechanisms struck by lightning.
Yes.
Got it fixed and then the next one.
We found a check Thursday.
Okay, so it said he should be okay, okay. Okay, is that all you need?
Um, no, it is not. Let's see. All right, um. These are recommendations from the airport advisory board. They recommend to lease five, fifty by fifty of the community hangar for six hundred dollars per month to the airbag. No, airman, airman. Um one year with and then month to month afterwards. Um we discussed it and when the um the actual person that's most to set it up that's over this, he said that he had no problem if there was bad weather. Once they get the the helicopter in, that is if it blows or it's high enough that planes can slide underneath if they need to come in to get out of weather. So he didn't have a problem with that.
And, and he broke that in the contract? I mean, it's gonna be in the contract?
We'll, we'll, we'll.
Just to.
We'll, yeah.
Clarify? Okay.
And then, um, Scott was gonna look at the lease stuff, but I think that I think we'll find a way to get that.
So you want us to approve the lease pending Scott's approval?
Yes.
I need a motion. Move by Ms. Milton. Second by Ms. Hudson's, any discussion? All in favor? Any needs? Motion carries?
Uh, they made a recommendation, but I think I need to get with Scott. The more I thought about this one, if they wanna cancel the contract with KSA, um, it's a, this the runway project that we didn't get the grant in time and we didn't get the funds for this year, so it'd be probably to fall before we would get on.
What, what, what was that?
It's, uh, it's the runway project. They had to go back, they will have to go back and fix, is it the end or the, or the beginning of the runway? I can't remember.
Which, depends on which way it's.
No, that's true.
Which way it been blown, which is the compromise?
But there's something, there's an unsafe area on one of the ends of the runway and that we're gonna fix it. And we had a grant that we had applied for, but we got the paperwork in too late. But the advisory board, yeah. So the advisory board, that, that's in the transition between airport director and the, so, um. They wanna cancel the contract, but I need to get the contract and let Scott look at it and just make sure that, that that's the right thing to do. And then I'll, I'll have that on the next agenda.
Okay.
I do have, um, and I'll be looking, but my app would, uh, normally would be, um, resigning at face of office first.
Okay.
And so I just wanted, um, wanted to bring that forth, I forgot if I looked at it.
Stop that.
No, that's the cane.
Oh, cane, I was, I'm sorry.
And, uh, I just wanted to make this aware, uh, of that. So make the board aware.
Okay, okay. All right, anything else, Ms. Khan?
Yes, so with, um, with Richard's immediate departure and Larry Matthews taking up the load, um, he's doing a good job. He's, he's keeping everything going. The advisory board would like to raise his pay from eighteen dollars an hour to twenty-one fifty an hour. That would put him from thirty-seven four hundred to forty-four seven hundred and twenty dollars before overtime.
Okay, um, is this temporary while, until he found a court director or is this gonna be permanent?
We talked about it both ways. I think, I think the consensus was this would be permanent at the, at the end of the day.
I have a question. What about Mr. Sam Farmer, did he ever?
He did not want it. He, I mean, I got it out of my mouth, but he, he had other things, he was, so.
So, so.
All right. Break the move. Mr. Gaines seconded it. All in favor? Any needs? Motion carries?
Um, and we do have four resumes that have come in. Um, one of them just actually wants to move here. His wife lives here and he wants to move here. And he's got a lot of experience with FAA, so I'm kind of excited about that resume, but, um. So just thank you.
Um, are y'all, are y'all gonna make a recommendation?
Yes.
You, you involved it to us?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
We love it. Um, so we were, uh, our human resource was contacted by the adult report. And they had one of their, um, adults, they come back from where he happens and is cleaning and, and they said, is there anywhere we can find something for him to do to, to keep him busy?
Who's, who's that?
Um, I don't, I don't know the name. Maybe they didn't show the name with me. But I would like to let this become a pilot program. And this, this would be a part-time job. We put him with someone that could monitor him every day. They will drug test him and, um, and give him a second chance. And if he fails to drug test, then that's it.
I mean, we don't have a position open.
We haven't.
We do, we do, we still have, um, maintenance and custodial position.
But we, we need, we, that's a, that's, I, I don't know about that. I mean, I'm in just my top, you deal with somebody who's taking mine, who's, uh, the manager and custodial thing is a job that they go from office to office, they had to have, that's transportation because it mixed up with that. The manager and custodial, uh, 'cause I, I had complained this weekend about, uh, they've not read a complaint. It was a concern. They rented the arena and the new bathroom that we built was, uh, and it wasn't the person who rented. It was total dust and stuff like that, so we don't have anybody who moving. So one thing, I don't know if you knew about the position, because you were fresh here. That is not a position that comes and just walk, that stays here. Their position goes all over these parks goes, that, that really needs to be a full-time position.
No, I understand that, but this person would be supervised, it wouldn't be by himself or herself.
That's what I'm saying, they got to be by there, except they.
Johnny, Johnny, this person would be with Johnny.
But Johnny don't have a position open.
It's, it's, I'm just tossing out an idea.
Yeah, Johnny don't have a position open. It's, it's more the, um, the custodian position that's open.
I wonder if they have any grants for anything? Like the program you're funding. Wouldn't even have to pay for it.
Yeah, just trying to give somebody a chance, a second chance.
We could ask workforce.
Yeah.
Why, why, why don't you check with workforce and see if there's anything that pays that salary? Uh, when they're coming out of, you know, addiction and see, and see where that goes.
I agree that we need to try to help people as much as we can, but this is the wrong, wrong position for that person. Because Johnny got so much to do, he just can't have nobody just with him at all time. That, that person got to be able to be on their own and take care of business on their own. And, uh, maybe something else will come up. If, if it was cutting grass, he can do that on his own.
Well, that might be something, but, but we're gonna say we can find you to grant it. With that kind of deal, it'd be really good. Anything else?
Uh, yes, um, we have someone that would like to transfer to Justice Board, um, from another department. I think this would be a good move because I don't think the market this person is.
Let, let me ask you this question, because I just, this is gonna be my next thing I was gonna ask you is, I know there were some applicants out for Justice Court, right?
Yeah.
And a position need to be filled over there.
Yes.
We need to do that.
That's what I'm saying. And I, I think I asked the last time, how many applicants it was, and you said eighty.
Yeah, and we cut it, we cut it down.
To, but we never received those applicants and it been months, a couple of months.
They interviewed, we've had, we've taken it very, but I don't interview.
But we are, we didn't interview, when they interviewed?
Okay, I'll get with Corbett because we've already picked those.
But that's for us to do, that comes to the board. That's.
This is not us.
Yeah. That was not under.
Okay, so is that a no?
Well, I don't know why she couldn't interview with the rest of them, if she's already an employee.
Oh. I mean.
We need to talk more frankly, that's a, we can go into executive session.
Yeah, yeah, we need to, because, I mean, something done and, and we not even know about what's going on. Yeah, we need to go into a second session on that.
Personnel issue?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
I don't know why we gotta go into executive session. We're not gonna be mentioning nobody's name. We're not calling out a name. We just kinda get some order in how you supposed to do what, that's how we doing. So I don't know why we gotta go into executive session.
I thought you said y'all wanted a name.
You don't have to.
No, we don't have to have a name. We just, we just need to know, I mean, we do the interview and, and I know the last time I actually was, you said eight application and y'all had gotten them down. And I told, the next step was that you all were supposed to submit it to us and let us do the interviewing. And that never happens. Because I was gonna bring that up today myself about, uh, what happened to the, uh, applications and, uh, had someone been hired over there, because that's something we do. And I didn't know if somebody, they were still needing someone, because it's been a couple of months now.
Okay, so we'll just figure out when everybody wants to interview. Uh, I won't be here the rest of the week, so, uh.
Yeah, three days.
Already made me late to leave.
And I could interview this when we. Any, any employees that want to?
They're for, yeah, they need to submit an application. Yeah.
Wait, 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 wait.
I'm just talking about.
Now, y'all know you got a bid line.
That's what I, that's what.
And the bid line has passed. Don't start operating out of oil.
That's what I was gonna just.
Get out of oil.
Yeah. Yeah.
Then I got another problem, but I'll do it kind of.
Okay.
That line is been, been closed.
All right, anything else? Okay.
Mr. President, there's a Menace property scheduled for today, one sixteen Booker Redd. I think that's all they're, they're here.
Oh, okay.
I think they done.
We're gonna.
Y'all, y'all can cut that.
Yeah, it's been took care of.
Yeah, they cut, I went out there, they ever cut that.
So it's good to go?
Yeah, it's good to go. Y'all cut in the back too, right? Yeah, they cut that. I got a picture of, they cut.
Okay, so.
I didn't know y'all were doing that job for the bingo.
Okay, thank you, I hear you.
Sorry about that, man.
No, thank you, thank you.
I didn't know you from Booker Road.
Well, they learned a lot of them. Yes.
Can I ask one question before we leave? Um, when they're saying that we're pinning on something and we're going, do we have to wait to the next meeting or is it gonna resolve before the meeting?
What are you specifically talking about?
Like, uh, Robert's trying to get the equipment. Um, we say depending on the missing check to make sure the money is in.
Money's in my.
Do I have to wait for the final?
No, we all.
It's already approved. Just once you say that the money is in, then you can go forward.
She'll verbally tell you, yeah, I have to come back. All right, thank you.
Um, to me now. Sound like a gang, you know? Uh. Is any, anything going on with the board? Is it, is BAS, is it all satisfied?
I haven't reached out to them, but I.
All right, um, um, a lot of people are upset about the tax deal with the school. I went to the school board meeting a couple of weeks ago and, um.
Who upset?
Uh, taxpayers, thirty-five thousand of them, I think. Um, because, uh, and, and one of the questions, my questions to them was, what are you doing with the schools that you were gonna tear down or mothball? And the reaction was, um, we decided to leave them open, uh, for historical reasons or something. And we're gonna lease them out to people to operate, but we're gonna continue to pay all the utilities and all the insurance and cut the grass. And I don't know if the school board has the authority to make monuments, because that's basically what they said. They were, they have historical value. Um, if, if they didn't, weren't doing that, they wouldn't need the tax increase. Uh, Scott, do you have any idea about that? Whether or not they could just say, we're turning this into a, a historical site? And the taxpayers get to pay for it forever?
Whether they can turn that property into a historic site?
Yeah, and, and.
Which one are we turning it to, a historic site?
Uh, well, they just said that they have historical value and they're gonna keep them. You know, in, 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 seven years ago, it was like, these schools are falling down. Well, now we gotta maintain them still. If you, if you don't care, tear them down, sell them or something.
I thought I read in the newspaper where they was, uh, I don't know, because everything printed is not correct. But I thought I read they was raising taxes because some of the money that they supposed to get was cut. And they needed the additional money because the money was cut. And it was a whole lot of money that was cut that they supposed to got and didn't get. I guess I just dreamed it, I don't know.
Well, the, the problem, and I, and I pointed this out, is they're asking for eighty-eight million dollars altogether.
From which?
Altogether for school, the school. The, and they said they have twenty-five hundred employees, I mean, twen- twenty-five hundred children. They're down to five hundred and eighty employees. But that's thirty-five thousand dollars a child, um, which is like ten or twelve thousand dollars over the national average. Um, it, it, it doesn't make any sense. And if I had eighty-eight million dollars budget and I couldn't drop, uh, four hundred thousand out of that budget in about fifteen minutes, I wouldn't consider myself a CEO. But, um. At any rate, the, the taxpayers aren't happy, and I don't blame them.
The school's vested with a pretty good amount of discretion in what they do with properties that are not used for school purposes. They had to have consideration on a transfer, which has to be genuine and it can't be a fake consideration. But if they find, and this is similar to statutes we find in the city and the county as well, that the purpose of which the improvement's gonna be is, is gonna be for civic, social, educational, cultural, moral, economic, or industrial welfare thereof, they can transfer upon the terms and conditions that they find satisfactory. So they have a broad amount of discretion.
I, I, I guess the real question is, can you lease it out for a dollar a year and we have to pay everything?
You have to have a genuine consideration, so probably not gonna be genuine consideration. So that's a dollar in something else that's contractual and tangible.
Well, uh, it was just a question I asked and they, that was what they came up with and it, it, it really didn't satisfy anybody that was there and certainly didn't satisfy, uh, me as somebody that knows when you shut something down or you mothball it, you need to tear it down or sell it because it, it's gonna continue to devalue and cost you money every single year. Um, some of those properties probably cost a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year just to make things, even though they're not used. Um. All right, I, my condolences, uh, I don't believe he probably saw this, uh, obituary, uh, Wendy Aldridge, a mechanic for, uh, uh, it was Great River, uh, GMC for, for a long, long time. He was, he had, he lived up in Racker County. He also worked for Mike's Probe. And he, uh, he had, he had a stroke last week and then he had another stroke in the hospital. They flew him out of here and he died. Um, I think he was about sixty-seven, I'm not sure. Uh, but Wendy Aldridge, yeah, he was a good friend of mine and I just, uh, wanted to mention him. Um, does anybody have anything else? Oh, besides a motion for recess, or is that a motion? Yeah, I need a motion for recess.
Oh, seconded.
Move by Mr. Gaines, second by Ms. Hudson's. All in favor? All right.